The uh, the neighbor, yeah, the neighbor across the street is District One.
Yep. Roosevelt is the, is the breaking point.
We're in the second district over here.
No gerrymandering.
Well, they gotta draw the line somewhere, I guess, but you'd think Main Street would have been the one. I don't know how they.
That'd be way too logical.
Yeah. I don't know. So we are live on the Facebook Live. Uh, I'm gonna try to share this as we always do. We try to get these things shared off of our phones and to our media, social media people. So we are, oh, and Chase, not Chase. Every time. I can't, for the life of me, I cannot differentiate between Chase and Cade. Maybe it's because I always work the full day and I was just like, it's, I call Chase Cade and Cade Chase. How we doing, man?
Good.
You ready?
Yep.
You feel good?
Yep. My eye is better this, this week.
You, uh, yeah, I was, I was ready to call for the transplant surgeon.
I toughed it out. Ended up being okay.
Alright. We already got eight live viewers in there. People are quick, ready to go.
I guess.
For a Wednesday.
Yeah.
For a Wednesday episode. Alright. Everybody feel good?
I feel great.
Alright. Ten listeners live. Here we go. Welcome to the Boss Hogg Liberty Podcast on the We Are Libertarians Network. I'm Jeremiah Morley, your host, and as always, we're joined by our co-host Dakota Davis.
Hey, how's it going, Jeremiah?
Well, it was terrifying. I didn't have my little sheet of paper that tells me everything, but I got it memorized.
Go off the, uh, go off your cuff.
Shooting from the hip. So our show is about our lives in rural Indiana. It's a show about folks who are involved in politics and we promise that our episodes are gonna be a fun and easy listen. We interview people who are influencers, elected officials, political experts, and folks we just find interesting. In the rotating co-host seat over here today, we have, uh, the guy that tapped out at the last minute last week. It's Cade Koger.
Good evening.
How we doing, sir?
Pretty good.
You're healed up?
Yeah.
You've got, you've got, you've got two eyes that are working.
Yep.
We, uh, we gave Chase Payton last week about ninety minutes of, of time to, to get out here and cover you and thank, thank God your beautiful brown eyes are alright.
Yeah, thankfully he could stand in for me.
Yes.
At the last minute, I took a right hook from my toddler. Caught it, caught a fingernail in the eye.
You gotta keep gloves on him, man. That's what, that's what I heard.
Yeah. It was a sucker punch. I'll get him back.
Yeah. He's got, you got seventeen more years of abuse ahead of him, so now, now you're keeping track.
Yep.
Alright, so in the other chair, featured guest, is it Cannon or Keenan?
Cannon.
Cannon.
Yeah.
I can, I'm nowhere close. Cannon. Cannon Gray in the green shirt.
Mm-hmm.
And you're a, uh, you're running for county council.
District One.
District One.
Across the street.
Yep. That's a very familiar district to me. I'm in your district. I might vote for you. You never know.
I doubt it. You're my opponent. I seriously doubt it. I'd be worried about you if you did.
There's, there's a lot of things about me that nobody, nobody really understands, yeah.
That's probably something to be said for that.
I'm, I mean, I'm just saying, it, you make a compelling case. I could vote for you. I don't know.
I'll try.
I haven't voted in the, the dirty Republican primary in a long time, but it goes on your permanent record.
Competition this year.
Yeah.
We do ours completely free of taxpayer money. Our, we select our candidates and it's not a burden on the, on the taxpayers' pocketbooks as a, as a Libertarian Party.
I've read that somewhere.
Yeah, we're not, we, you know, shameless self-promotion, man. We do it all the time.
That's right.
That's what this is.
That's right. So Cannon is, uh,
Shameless self-promotion.
Has come in in his, uh, in his leprechaun green. He's, uh,
Trojan green.
Trojan green.
His Trojan green. He has, uh, worked as the, uh, you were the vice principal of the Newcastle High School.
Yeah, associate, but that's, uh, vice. It's mostly disciplines, so vice would be.
Oh, my gosh. Was Vice Principals, is it your favorite show? Was it on HBO?
I've seen it.
You guys didn't burn down any houses, did you?
Not in the twenty-one years I've been there.
That's a spoiler if you haven't watched the show. It was, uh, some tough stuff going on that thing. Anyway, the, uh, yeah, so he's, he's dressed in the green, his campaign colors. He's got the Newcastle Trojan green and white. And, uh, he has decorated our, uh, our studio strongly in his colors. Uh, you get the award for having the most, uh, the most swag to bring in.
I've been watching your show. That was my goal.
You're repping last week's, uh, last week's candidate, Ed Tarantino on the button as well.
I did. I told Ed. I had dinner with him last night at the EDC dinner.
Yes, sir.
And I said, I'm gonna try something new. I'm gonna wear somebody else's button. He's a good guy.
The next thing I'm gonna see is like the Chevrolet logo and, and 3M and the, you have Hendrick Motorsports on there.
NASCAR.
So we got, uh, we'll see what Mr. Bowman looks like next week when he comes on.
Yeah.
Um, alright, so Dakota, we got some thank yous to make, man.
We, we have some thank yous from the Patreon account. Uh, once again, if, if you haven't already, you can find us on Patreon under Boss Hogg of Liberty. Uh, you'll, you'll see our little emblem pop up and you get all kinds of free, free gear with, with your donations. Um, and we, it's just, it's incredible to me still, the amount of, of people that we have.
We're halfway to our studio goal.
Oh, yeah.
We're over, we're over two hundred and twenty dollars, two hundred and thirty dollars a month in, in pledge contributions.
Yeah, our goal is five hundred dollars a month so that we can get moved out of my spare bedroom and into a professional studio and, uh, so that I don't have to have people walking in my house every week. Then, then have to listen to my dogs bark at them whenever they ring the doorbell. But, uh, we have so many people. I think we have fourteen people now.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, it's awesome. So we have Christie Avery and Brantley Spicer, uh, up at our top with the, the most monetary donations of those two. And then we have Mary Hershey and Rebecca Baker. Uh, Sarah Potter, Jason Roberts, Kirsten Kronk, Chad Mallico, Nancy.
Nancy Dietz.
Dietz, Jamie Joe Owens, Craig DeCosta, Your Parents, Joyce and Paul. My parents are still not on the list.
Another week goes by, no Davises.
I harassed them this weekend.
Just keep calling them out.
Yeah. Yeah, this is like the third weekend in a row.
We will shame you into giving us money.
Come on, catch up. And then, uh, Zachary Bertram, Corey Murphy, and Aaron Ewer.
There we go.
That's our list.
That's awesome.
Huge thank yous.
And, uh, we got a, a big contribution this week as well from Mary Logan, a one-time contribution because we, we spent some time over at the, uh, Henry County Memorial Park Board meeting. Uh, we'll talk about that in a minute, but, uh, we covered that and she, uh, she said, "Thank you very much" and shot us a PayPal donation. So that was awesome. Uh, very exciting stuff. Uh, there's, there's all kinds of merchandise announcements for us as well. There's, uh, we'll get into Eric, we'll talk about Eric the Turkey now, because we, we, a minute ago, we went live as, as the Eric the Turkey account. Confession time, it was us. We were, we were the, uh, the voice, the writers and the, uh, the perpetrators of, uh, of Eric the Turkey.
Really?
Uh, yeah. It was us. We, we, we were the guys. We, we ran the Facebook page.
That's pretty clever stuff.
We had some fun with it.
We did have fun with it. I had, I had a blast.
Yeah.
I didn't know it was you guys.
We're comedy writers now.
It was, it was busy. It was busy work.
I could tell from your show that you were, but I didn't know you were Eric the Turkey.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. We were, we were, us and Chris Spengel of the Bob and Tom Show. We were, uh, we were the voice of Eric the Turkey. So if you guys enjoyed that and had some fun with it, uh, you know, you were over there watching that, there's, uh, there's an official Eric the Turkey shirt that we are, uh, that's being sold, that's gonna go towards podcast, because if you listen to that Memorial Park Board meeting on Monday, you know that we had some audio issues and, uh, we need a new microphone. So we're gonna take whatever t-shirt sales go from that, and that's gonna go into the microphone phone.
That is, yep. They're, uh, they're pretty cool t-shirts. Shout out to Ross Tickner for, uh, designing, for drawing up the, the picture of Eric the Turkey with the candles and stuff. We use his, that we use his artwork on the, on the t-shirts. It says, "In loving memory of Free Bird the Turkey, twenty sixteen to twenty eighteen." Um, I think they're eighteen dollars and fifty cents and we get about half of that, uh, as profit from.
If you are a Patreon subscriber, though, there's a special discount code for only the Patreon people, so.
Yeah, and it takes it down to twelve dollars and fifty cents.
So if you join the Patreon, you can, you can get your Eric the Turkey shirt at a discount.
That's right.
Basically takes all the money out of our pocket, but hey, you're a Patreon subscriber then, so we'll take it.
You're gonna talk about the, uh, pink flamingo out there by the cemetery?
Yeah.
With the cross.
So the, uh,
Did you guys do that too?
I, okay, so I, on Friday night, I said, "If this town doesn't have a flower memorial out there by sundown, I don't want to be associated with it. It's ridiculous." And I was busy. Uh, my, the lovely Sarah Potter, my bride-to-be and I went, uh, we were meeting with, uh, Susan Bell, who's gonna be the officiant. We were figuring out how the actual wedding was gonna go in July when I get married. Uh, so I didn't have time. So I, I put it out to the world and I said, "If this doesn't happen, I'm gonna be ashamed of y'all." And, and Saturday morning, we, we went by and it turns out it was some girls from Spice Land. They, they erected a couple of little crosses out there, uh, with, uh, with the red, white, and blue.
And then it's just, it's just snowballed into more and more people.
A little bit more has come out.
It's awesome.
Sarah had, uh, had purchased some flowers. We laid some flowers out there and I thought we were gonna be the first ones. I really did. And I saw the crosses and I was like, I was giddy. Uh, so that was where that picture came from. And then the next day, my dad, my dad loves flamingos, and I had a flamingo in my yard that he had left. Um, so the flamingo made its way out there and then somebody else put the little chicken light out there and then the turkey feather.
My favorite is the stove top.
And I didn't have anything to do with that. That was genius.
That's out there. It's the greatest thing. Yeah, I love that. That is, whoever did that is a genius. Uh, you have my eternal gratitude for putting the, the stove top stuffing out there.
So, and it was a fun thing for us to do. I know a lot of people really, really, really did, uh, did enjoy the humor of it. There's a handful of people that think we're terrible people and we're profiting off of the death of a turkey, but, uh, you know, when, when something like that happens in a community, it's a way for everybody to kind of come together and have a fun little thing to talk about. So we, we enjoyed it. And, uh, you know, it's almost turkey season, so.
I can't wait to be walking.
You can get your stickers and go get your turkey here.
Yeah. I can't wait to walk around Kroger and see somebody wearing, uh, Eric the Turkey t-shirt. That's gonna make.
See a t-shirt in the wild.
Yeah, it'll be awesome.
Yeah, so we, that's, that's out there in the world and then there's some more Boss Hogg Liberty merchandise. You, you put together a whole store.
We have a whole store at Redbubble.com. You can search B-H-O-L and there's all kinds of merchandise. It's a lot better than what, uh, T-Chip did us and, uh, tried to shut down our page and all that stuff, but we have our own corner of Redbubble.com and it's full of merchandise. You can get everything. It's such a wide variety.
It's pretty affordable, too. It's, they're not, they're not high-priced.
Right, they're good prices and, uh, the shipping's a good, a good cost and it's just, it's so much better. And, ah, the quality of the things, of the actual products are, are just incredible. Like, if you wanted a Boss Hogg of Liberty duvet, you could get a duvet. That's how, that's the expanse of all these products. Yeah.
I just came from Italy. Is that like a bidet?
No, no, this is, you, you put this one on the bed, not in the bathroom. Yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm being domesticated. I'm not gonna be a single guy anymore, so I have to learn about duvet covers now. Yeah.
I guess, yeah, that's right. It is a married guy term.
Yeah. I wouldn't, I wouldn't have known that a year ago.
That's right.
So, alright, so then, uh, Monday, you and I, uh, we hung out and this is where I met, uh, met Mr. Gray for the first time. Uh, we were out there covering the Memorial Park Board meeting.
Yep. We went in there full Boss Hogg Liberty style, set up a table.
We were in our suit, uh, our, our, our official uniform with our Boss Hogg polos.
Yep. We had a, there was a, one, uh, kid that came up to us and he wanted his picture taken with us and was doing two thumbs up and we, we gave him the thumbs up back. It was awesome.
Local celebrity Dakota Davis.
Yep.
Signed autographs.
Well, I mean, it's because the table is what I think. We had that whole table set up there with all of our equipment and everything, and then it turns out that none of the extra mics that we brought worked.
Yeah, we're, uh, we're still semi-pro with this. We're, we're efforting. We're, we're making improvements, but, uh, you could hear it and people actually got to see the, uh, see the park board meeting. So we'll ask, uh, we'll ask, uh, Cannon, is it Keenan? Help me out with this.
It's Cannon.
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 Yeah, like Ken?
Ken, yeah.
And probably A-N.
N, yeah.
Phonetically, it's probably Ken-A-N.
Cannon.
Cannon.
Cannon. People have trouble with my name, too, so don't feel bad.
Yeah, we call him Jade.
I always get Katie.
Katie.
Yeah.
Chase.
Or Chase, yeah. So Cannon, uh, how, how, what'd you think of this, uh, this park board meeting? I assume that was the first one you've been to or did you bend others?
No, it's second.
Second time.
I went to the first one. This was less heated than the first one.
The last one, yeah, there was.
They had two officers, two sheriff's deputies at the first one and they stood up and actually thought they were going to be involved. So this was fairly calm. Um, people voiced their opinion, so, um, the doughboy is the issue. I, I, I think everyone, including me, is in favor of everything they're planning. You know, the museum and some of the other things they're planning for veterans. I think it's great. But a lot of people have come up to me and have expressed, veterans especially, the majority of the people have come up to me, have, uh, serious, genuine feelings about the doughboy. And I told them I would side with them. My campaign manager said, "Don't be stupid. Don't take a stand on it because it's not a major issue. I'm just not that kind of person." I, too many people came up to me with heartfelt feelings and I said, "I'm for everything that they're planning, but I think, given the circumstances, the doughboy ought to probably stay where it is." And I believe that.
Yeah, the, uh, I, I said a couple of weeks ago, I said, "This may, this story may end up with, this is the story of how Henry County went up with two doughboys." Because you can't, you can't cut it in half and put it in both places and they're, you know, they, I heard, we heard last night that they raised like sixty-eight thousand dollars in cash and in kind of contributions for it. Um, I, you know, there, there's a proposal Mark Schronore shared around yesterday that looks like they could, they could secure another one for about twenty grand. And I think if, if they can raise it privately and you had the, uh, you had one doughboy, uh, you know, the new doughboy in front of the, uh, the new monument site and say, "Hey, this is what it looks like. If you wanna hike out to the original location, you can see it." I think that solves the accessibility issue. I think that'd be a cool plan.
I'd give to it.
Yeah, we'll see, uh, we'll see where it lands, but, uh, right now, things are under, you know, I think, I think they're definitely gonna have the flagpole display and the, you know, there's gonna be something there in front of the, the Smith Building. Just, uh, stay tuned to see what happens.
You've been saying that for quite some time, like since the beginning of this doughboy controversies. This is going to be the story of how Newcastle ends up with two doughboys. Uh, you've been saying that for a while.
I, I, I don't see another way.
You called it, "Are you a psychic?"
I might be. You can talk about that on your tinfoil time.
Yeah, maybe.
How does Jeremiah see the future?
I didn't realize that there had been three, was it Medal of Honor winners from Henry County?
Yeah, three separate Medal of Honor winners. Yeah, and they're, that's.
Doing something with them, I think, would be.
Yeah, I think they're gonna put up plaques on.
Really great.
On stones.
Yeah, you're gonna have, uh, it, it's gonna be, you know, the, the doughboy is from World War I and it honors the World War I soldiers and obviously we're coming up on the, uh, the hundred-year anniversary of the, uh, the end of the Great War. Uh, and then two years from that, two years from now, we'll have the hundred-year anniversary of Memorial Park's existence.
And I didn't know that he was actually throwing a grenade.
Yeah, he's holding, he's holding a grenade. It's cold.
People thought they were waving at them when they were moving and all that.
I always thought that, too.
Yeah, no, he is.
Grenade after coming out of the foxhole and making it away for the other soldiers. He was throwing a grenade.
It's a really cool, it's a really cool statue. Really awesome piece of art.
A lot of, a lot of artwork is, is somebody that's at peace or they're not fighting. He's got a, you know, he, he is ready to kill. That's what it is. It's an engaged in battle.
I think all the work they've done is really great. All the plans they talked about are really good plans. A lot of thoughts got into it. I, uh, Kathy Hamilton gave an impassioned, um, talk about the original intent of the doughboy. If anybody was, persuaded me to change my mind, it probably would be her, but, uh, probably ninety percent of the individuals, I know over fifty people have shared with me and they, that over ninety percent have been in favor of keeping it where it was. And I, out of respect for them, the majority of them being veterans, I, I side with them.
How do you see, uh, yourself as a council candidate having an impact on that?
Uh, just standing up and giving my peace of mind. I mean, council obviously is financial. Uh, I said I would, I would contribute to anything like the plan. You have a second doughboy, something for the Medal of Honor winners. Somebody maybe who's on this show suggested Steve Alford. I think it probably should stay military veterans, heroes of, of wars, but.
Yeah, that was all, that was Chase. He had a wide variety, but I think we said on.
Chase had a wide variety.
Steve Alford was the most universally acceptable of, of the list yet.
I don't think that was the intent up there to war memorial.
Uh, well, I, Betsy Mills, a candidate for count, for District Three, has been advocating strongly for Eric the Turkey, so I, you know, nothing's off the table.
Until last Friday, that might have been a good idea.
Oh, no.
Well, I'm sure the mayor could find the turkey and we can have a bronze casting of the turkey made and we can, you know, we can piece, we can save this thing.
I think we should have caught the turkey and relocated it alive to Memorial Park.
Yep.
To Memorial Park.
The DNR. That's all they do is catch animals.
I think they started. Yeah.
They said they'd, they'd come back, because I think they had a family in a roost or something over by the mausoleum.
Yeah.
And they said, they contacted them. They said they would come back as long as they had little ones.
I heard in the barber shop today, that's where all the real news comes from, in the barber shop, the, uh, the local, the MVP barber shop, K, uh, of course, uh, co-host, uh, co-host Clay, who's on, uh, sabbatical. But we do, I can confirm that we've, we've reached an agreement for, uh, for, for a show in May where we're gonna have, uh, co-host, uh, Clay, Clay come back.
The long-awaited return of Councilman Clay Morgan.
I think May twenty-fourth, mark your calendars, seven PM. Uh, we, we'll have him back on and we'll talk, uh, we'll talk, we'll post politics.
Business. All business. That's what we're gonna be talking about.
We'll see what happens. Anyway, I heard that, uh, the DNR, the local guy was aware of it and his superior said, "No, leave it alone." So that's barber shop talk, but, uh, I, if you can't believe the barber shop, what can you believe?
Exactly.
Facebook, maybe.
Yeah.
I've never, I've never heard a piece of fake news in the barber shop.
At least people have faces in the barber shop. You're talking face to face. On Facebook, you don't, uh,
Yeah.
You know, it, it, you're talking to, to emoticons.
Yeah, and you're a lot more brave when you're on Facebook, too.
True.
At least here you've got video.
That's right.
Kind of face to face.
If people don't know us by now, we're fifty-three episodes in. You've got, you can't make this junk up. You, you know, you know the person, right?
Yeah.
So, uh, over the weekend, Friday night, I was driving home, had, uh, I had a nice, uh, happy little cut-up, talking to the, uh, talking to the judge, Judge Bell, uh, getting ready to plan my wedding. I get home from Hagerstown and all of a sudden, the United States is at war again. We've dropped bombs in Syria. And I was, I was kind of triggered. I, I, I don't know, I, I don't know where you're at in the, uh, in, in, in this, in this story or if you have an opinion.
I've read your, um, editorial in the Courier today.
Yeah, so I, uh,
I know you have an opinion.
I do. I, I, I have, I get frustrated, uh, Cannon, with people that, that aren't true to themselves. So when somebody, when somebody agrees with the president because they're in their party and then they disagree with the president because they're not in the party, I, I get very frustrated.
Kind of like Russia.
And, yeah, exactly. So the, uh,
Or Comey. I like him, I hate him, I like him, I hate him.
Yeah, exactly.
So, uh, I, I wanna know, and we have a unique situation, uh, where the sixth district is open congressional seat, and we've tried to bring candidates through the studio, uh, as they've been running, running for office. We still have an open invitation to, uh, to Greg Pence to come by. Uh, hopefully, uh, if he calls between now and the, uh, between now and, and the primary day, Dakota and I will find five minutes to squeeze him in. I don't know how we're gonna do it, because we're gonna have three shows next week, but we'll find a way if, uh, if the Pence folks wanna come on. But, uh, if not, if he, if he gets through the primary, we'll invite him back to, uh, to come between now and the general. Uh, but we've, we've tried to have an open, open conversation with all of these folks. Uh, this is an interview and, uh, this, this congressional seat has, has spurned, uh, the Vice President of the United States. It, who also was the governor of this state, uh, it gave us Luke Messer, who is running for US Senate and was nearly, he's three steps away from being the Speaker of the House, and it gave us David McIntosh, who's the Chair of the Club for Growth. These are high, high-level Republican, uh, Republican candidates, uh, people that have been very influential in the United States government. So our seat's a big deal and, uh, it's an invitation and they need to, they need to answer to us. So I have a, an op-ed that's in the Courier Times, it's in the Greensburg paper. I think it's gonna be in the Shelby County paper and a number of other locations, uh, that basically says, "How do you feel about this bombing in Syria?" Uh, and we reached out to, uh, to all of the campaigns and, uh, we got responses from, uh, from a number of them. So we'll go over those briefly and we'll post them on the Boss Hogg page, uh, in, in, uh, in another note, so you can go back and read the full responses that we received from the campaigns. Uh, but we had a lot of response from, uh, from the campaigns, so, uh, real briefly.
Before you get into this, before you get into Jonathan Lamb, uh, he's gonna be the first response that you read. Um, I wanna point out that on his, whenever he addressed, whenever he addressed and wrote back, he said, "Boss Hogs of Liberty."
He did. He wrote, he wrote back to all of us. The Boss Hogs were, were co-equals.
Yes.
And Jonathan, he has no problem coming on this show.
No, he's been, uh, he's been on. He's coming back on Thursday of next week. So, uh, next week, we got Adam Bowman, uh, Peg Steffendell, and Jonathan Lamb. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Once again, mark your calendars. Dakota and I are gonna be punch drunk and tired, but we're having, we're having fun. Uh,
Did you get his book, Lamb's?
I have not had his book yet, no.
He's sending it to everybody. I got it in the mail on Friday, I think.
It's Economics is Better Than Sex or He Likes Sex. What's the, what's?
It's like, uh, it's like, it's like sex.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it has a Marilyn Monroe picture with the dress coming up over the.
He talked a little bit about it.
I don't know if it was, I don't know if it was.
Superhose over Marilyn Monroe.
It may not have been in print when he was here the last time, but I bet we'll see a copy of it next week.
I hope so.
Maybe a signed copy if we play our cards right.
A signed copy. Yeah.
Uh, so anyway, he, uh, he, his, uh, he wrote back in this morning and, uh, the general gist is that he, he does support the president's decision to, uh, to bomb. Uh, and he's a firm believer that Congress needs to provide approval for military action that constitutes war. The US should not be entering into conflicts to avoid, uh, the need of congressional approval of military action. Uh, and he also went on to say that, uh, "We should not be engaging in long-term military action without congressional approval." Uh, and he talked about the War Powers Act requiring congressional approval after, uh, after sixty days of conflict. Uh, it's a singular action, so he didn't necessarily need it, but, uh, the US needs to, uh, needs to basically talk, talk, deal with it.
See that, I, I've seen that a lot. I've seen that rebuttal a lot, um, kind of giving an excuse for the president's actions, the sixty days of conflict. How long have our troops been on the ground in Syria? And how long have our allies been on the ground in Syria? How long have we been in the Middle East? It's been a lot longer than sixty days.
Yeah, I mean, the nine eleven authorization that came from this was, uh, that, that kind of opened up a lot of what the US government's done under the last three presidents was done seventeen years ago. Uh, so at, at this, that was my, kind of my challenge is that Congress needs to debate and take back some of this authority. Uh, Tom Furkinoff, who, uh, was running in the Republican primary, dropped out and he's seeking the Libertarian nomination. Uh, he said he didn't have the information, uh, basically, or he's not privy to the information, uh, with regard to the intelligence that was here. Uh, but he says he sees time and time again the hypocrisy out of the elected officials from the two parties that dominate the political landscape, the Republicans and Democrats, as Sam Goldstein calls them, "The old parties." Uh, "If we don't start, uh, sending more representatives to Washington who will put the country ahead of, uh, party, this power imbalance will only become more dangerous." Uh, "The situation in Syria has gone on long enough and that Congress should have acted and either authorized the president to use military force or restricted it," which is a very valid point, because, uh, President Obama was, was dropping bombs over there, uh, like, two years ago. Uh, and there was a whole group of folks that were against Syria. And that was, that was one of the things I talked about in the letter. Uh, there were very similar letters that were signed, uh, by, I don't have the copy in front of me now, I think eighty-eight members this time and about a hundred and forty members of Congress the last time. Um, and unfortunately, only about fifteen or twenty of them were the same people. And there's not been that much turnover in the Congress. Uh, and that's the people that, that politically are, are, more or less, you'll call them hypocrites. If you signed it the last time and you believe the same way, then you should have signed it this time as well.
Yep. Yeah.
And if you signed it conveniently this time, but you didn't last time, it was because your party was in power, and that's pretty shameful, too.
Well, Congress hasn't declared war since the forties, has it?
Nineteen forty-one is the last time we declared war.
I was gonna say, World War II.
Yeah.
So you have Vietnam, you have Korea, you have all these conflicts, and they're all conflicts.
Right.
And we have fifty thou, fifty-five thousand deaths in Vietnam. That's more than a conflict.
Yeah.
We've created, yeah, we have the Vietnam War Memorial, but it's conflict, right? It's sad. It's, it's ridiculous. And I, I'm not a dove. I'm fully in favor of fighting back when it's, you know, when it's time and it's appropriate and the United States is threatened, but we gotta be honest with ourselves and we need to declare the wars and debate it and then go in and, and accomplish, accomplish the task. But seventeen years in the Middle East, non-stop, you've got kids that, you know, they're, you literally have kids that are gonna be fighting in their dad's war and it doesn't, it doesn't wash, for me.
Be, be on patrol in the same Middle Eastern encampments that their fathers were on whenever they were enlisted.
So Jim Pruitt, uh, he's seeking the Democrat nomination. We've not, we had, we have not had Jim on and that's our apology. We've not been able to make that happen. Uh, he, he responded and, uh, said, "Yes, he would have signed the letter that we talked about," which is, uh, gets a gold star from me. Uh, "He would have signed the letter and it doesn't matter which president's in the, in political pa, the party of the, whichever," I'll read it himself. I'm not trying to summarize it. "I would have signed the letter and it does not matter who the president, nor the political party of the president. Whether or not the military strikes against Syria was good or bad or necessary, action does not matter. The president should have gone to Congress and obtained congressional authority to launch such a military action," uh, which is exactly correct. That's, that's my, at least, correct to me. I will endorse that, uh, that statement. That's exactly where I'm at. Lane Seekman, who has been on here, Democrat, running, uh, running from, uh, Rising Sun, uh, he referenced the, uh, authorization of military forces, uh, from nineteen seventy-one, or from two thousand and one, and it's, he said, "It authorized the use of the United States Army Forces, Armed Forces against those responsible for the attacks on September eleventh, two thousand and one, and any associated forces. That being said, the US has limited national interest at stakes in Syria and the AUMF does not authorize punitive actions for humanitarian purposes. We need a comprehensive debate in Congress on military strategy, including Syria." Uh, I responded back to him and said, "Nine eleven is not an unlimited runway for any milit, any military action. Congress has given away way too much authority," and Lane completely agreed. So that's, uh, that's his. And then, uh, later this evening, uh, we, we got a response from Jean Anna Lake, uh, from Muncie, and she, uh, she said that the last time.
She's running as a Democrat.
She's running as a Democrat from, uh, from Delaware County. Uh, "The last time our county actually declared war on a country was December nineteen forty-one after Japan bombed Pearl Harbor." Wasn't the Germans. It was, uh,
Yeah.
Animal House will tell you differently. Uh, "At, at that time, the Senate approved, uh, full military attack of war eighty-two to zero. Following that action, the United States has found itself, in my opinion, way too involved in foreign conflicts, from Korea to Vietnam to Iraq and more. While our help and aid is vital at times, I believe that we seem to be almost trigger-happy when it comes to getting involved, as our presidents seem to consider themselves to be the police in chief of the world. I feel that when atrocities like Bosnia or Syria do come up, we obviously have compassion and wanna help. Doing so is fine, but only at the approval of Congress and as the law allows." So I, I have not heard from, uh, from Representative Pence, uh, or not Representative Pence.
No. Not, not yet.
Businessman Pence, uh, on where he, he's at, the last I saw, he's, uh, his, his campaign page says he's a Marine, but I haven't seen anything on foreign policy, so I don't know the answer to that one.
Running on the, uh,
And then the three, the three candidates for, uh, for Senate on the Republican side all, um,
They all.
All supported the president, so.
Yeah. If you've been paying attention to the Senate race, it's pretty much, "Which one of us is the most in line with the president?" It's, it's been that way the entire time. It's ridiculous, because it, it started out and Mike Braun was running as an outsider candidate. And then he started doing a little bit less and less, uh, performing less in the polls and, uh, now he's just going the exact same route. I hate that. I absolutely despise it.
Welcome to big-time politics.
Yeah.
I like them all because they graduated from my alma mater.
Are they all Wabash guys?
They're all Wabash. I should be running for Senate. I mean, what am I doing here?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I heard there's an independent running now. Uh, Mark Rutherford was here. He's the, uh, uh, the Libertarian seeking the Secretary of State nomination and he's a Wabash grad, graduate. Yeah.
They put out some good.
There's a lot of, a lot of Wabash guys.
It is a good place.
It's a boys' college, so y'all have to stay focused, right? Yeah.
Well, they get the girls down, DePaul. It's only, it's only a twenty-two and a half mile.
Is that what you had to do?
Yeah.
Let's, let's dig into this.
Twenty-two and a half.
Oh, man.
Sounds like, uh, you know the exact location pretty well.
It's, uh, every Wabash guy.
Round, round trip, it's forty-five miles.
Knows how much gas it takes to get to DePaul.
Meet him halfway.
So speaking about Wabash College, uh, you graduated from there. So speaking about Wabash College, you graduated from there in 1976?
Uh, yes.
And you were a biology major?
I was. Yes. Yes. Thinking pre-med at the time. Didn't didn't quite work out that way.
Tell me, Dr. Gray, how are things going?
I almost got my doctorate, all but dissertation. Now I'm here. I'm not running for senate. Next question. How are things going?
Well, it can't be that bad. You retired now, so we're all sitting here in jealousy.
Yeah, I am retiring. You'll be there someday. I put in my time.
I would say so, looking at looking at your career path right here on the show notes, I would say you put in your time. But you, after you left Wabash, you went to Purdue University and you changed. And it went to education at a major and then communications minor.
Yes.
And you actually spent, you actually used that communications minor to use 12 years in radio.
Yes, I started at Wabash College. They had a radio station that really had a commercial license, one of the very few educational.
How dare they make profits in radio?
I know. I helped pay my way through college. I sold the McDonald's in Crawford's when I had on our station. The other station in town that's the big station.
Do you remember the?
They hated me because McDonald's spent all their money to the slower college radio station.
Do you remember the the ad script?
No, I don't, but it was WNDY, which when they went under about, or they sold out.
WNDI, NDY was the channel 23, NDTV.
It still is.
Yeah.
About about three years after I left, they decided they didn't want to stay in the radio business or it's too expensive or they needed to upgrade. It was not a stereo FM. It was just a mono. And they sold out and then somebody bought their their call letters. I figured it'd be somebody in in Chicago or Indy. You know, the windy city would be perfect and people would pay for a good call, call letters.
Yeah.
But instead it was Indy on the TV side.
Family had it for a while. In the 90s, the the Holman George family had it and it had all the Indy car practice. Because we're a racing show, Dakota. You know that. We've established that a number of times.
But yeah.
We're a racing show.
A number of times we had Robin Miller on.
I know.
So what what made you decide to change your major from, you know, your biology thinking pre-med? And then all of a sudden you go to education. What was your, what was your thought process there?
I don't even remember the evolution. It was certain classes and I was married at that time. We were at Purdue. We stayed in married student housing. Took some classes that were interesting.
How nice was the married student housing then? I remember in the 90s, people said it was terrible. How?
It wasn't great. It was out on Airport Road.
Yeah.
And it wasn't bad. Very multicultural. Our next door neighbors spoke Portuguese. They were from Brazil. So we, it was very, very interesting, learned a lot. Worked my way through college. Wife had jobs. She ended up getting her masters while at Purdue. I finished my masters at Purdue. Did work at the oldest radio station in Indiana, which is WBAA. It's the Purdue station. It was the first station that ever went on in Indiana. And then the first job was teaching over at Northeastern Lane. Then I worked at WRIA 1013.
Any good there when you were there? Because I know Northeastern's had some terrible football teams over the years.
They had the longest losing streak. Now they're much better after I left. But one of my jobs was to videotape them. And it was, it was a sad period. They went years without winning the football, but they're much better. About five years later, they got rebuilt.
That's how.
New coach and it started being some W's.
Whenever I was in middle school and high school, that's how try high was. We we didn't win a single game the entire time that I was in middle school and high school. Until the very last game, my senior year of high school. And you would have thought that like we had won the state championships and how much we celebrated in there. It was like, we had like a, the football players like walked around the, walked around the square in the high school and we were all cheering and clapping.
Who was your coach?
Brian Pegg's at that time. Yeah.
Yeah, and he had been pretty successful. Brian was there when I was assistant principal because that was my first administrative job was. Ninety to 95 was at South Henry.
Okay.
They had a pretty good football team then. They won more games than they'd lost. It seems like most of, you know?
It ended up changing.
So in your time there, Dakota, you won one football game?
One football game, correct, yeah.
You went out a winner?
I know. It wasn't me.
Oh, you weren't, you weren't on the team anymore?
No, I wasn't on the team. I I quit after my, after my sophomore year.
Noted quitter, Dakota Day.
I'm tired of losing, man.
Maybe it was Denny Guy that had the winning.
Dennis Guy, yeah.
Yeah, then Brian Pegg took over about the time I left.
Okay.
We might have had overlap. When were you there?
Uh, I graduated in 2014.
Oh, no, we weren't.
This is, this is the part that, this is the part that's terrible. Dakota, remind me again that you were born January 1st, 1996. Correct.
Jeez.
Horrible. I was born in 80s at least. I'm 13 years older than Dakota and it's painful to me.
We're not talking age. Just pretend I'm a female host.
It's impolite to remind you that he's nearly 78 years old.
Not quite.
Ken and Gray, will he make it four years? Let's find out together.
I might look like it after 21 years of Vice, but I'm not.
21 years of Vice. Yes, that was great.
What what did you teach at Northeastern?
Uh, I had, gosh, my license, I did a little bit of everything. I was their drama sponsor, school library, audio visual, did micro computers. Came in in the mid 80s and we started setting up micro computer labs, that's probably, and worked the radio station down in Richmond.
You taught Oregon Trail.
Yeah, 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 Oregon Trail. It was the early days, the Apple II computer. We were the first probably networked Apple. Which was slower than, 10 times slower than these.
Crap out of.
Unbelievable. Put in a little five and a quarter floppy disk and wait, wait 10 minutes for it to load up. It was all black and white. It just, but that was all they had back then. So then I kind of got my job in up at Anderson University. Because it was also audio visual and micro computer support for the whole campus. We supported the education department.
Yeah, you were the, at Anderson University, you were the assistant director of IMC, which I ended up getting wrong, wrong the first time.
It's Instructional Materials Center, which is top floor of the Decker Hall, which is administration building. We actually, back then, we had about 10 TVs on carts and we rolled them all over campus on a cart.
Through the snow in January.
Literally through the snow in January.
It was good exercise.
And we finally, before I left, had satellite locations in the music wing and or the the science hall and the mute fine arts hall. And so we had storage compartments that we kept them so we didn't have to actually go from our center across, you know, a quarter of a mile to these. So we got, and the first micro computer labs went on under, under my tutelage.
Were you there with the, the first time the Colts camp was there? Were you around on campus when the Colts camp there?
That occurred later, but about halfway through, they changed it from Anderson College to Anderson University when I was there.
Okay.
Those are the Ravens.
86 to 90. So you were there for four years?
Yeah, I was there for four years. They had a, probably a strong one was baseball. They had a real strong baseball team. I'm trying to think of Don. He was well noted.
Don Knotts. Everybody loves Don Knotts.
Yeah, it sounds good. I might think of it a little bit. I remember Don and good guys, good place. It's a nice Christian school.
I had a buddy that played football there one year, so we hung out. And I, once again, like, bad luck to my friends. Because I don't think Anderson won a single football game that year when I followed Joe Robinson around, but we had some fun, had some fun going up there and seeing the campus and learning. Of course, once the Colts had their training camp there, all of a sudden they had a brilliant football field and it was a nice spot. Schuman Stadium, I think. It's Muncie Schuman Stadium. It's, I don't remember the stadium name now. I'm sure it's a major donor, but it's nice.
So after you, after you left Anderson University, then came your, your time as in the Vice, as we, as we've been calling it, as an assistant principal.
Yeah, I finished my EDS, which was an educational specialist. It's midway between masters and doctorate at Ball State.
Okay.
And now my major was school superintendency with a minor in curriculum. And so I put feelers out to become an administrator and had several offers, but they just didn't seem right around different parts of the state. So I turned actually a couple of years down, so it's, I might have left Anderson a couple of years earlier if I'd taken some of those jobs. Up in extreme northern Indiana, north of Fort Wayne.
Were you always in Henry County, living, living here for these? Or did you kind of move around with the districts?
Well, for all the administration, I lived in Henry County. So for 32 years, I've lived in Henry County. So I know some of the candidates say I've lived all of my life in Henry County. Well, I've lived 32 years of my adult life in Henry County, which is.
You're like me, you're new here. I've only been here for 20 something.
Yeah. And for some reason, I guess, living here all your life since birth is supposed to be something special, but above and beyond somebody who's lived here only 32 years.
I think we should all, you and I are running the same race. I think we should all release our long form birth certificates to show where we're from.
Yes, racial metal. I have here my 2005 Donald Trump tax.
I'm calling for it now. I want long form birth certificates from every candidate running in the first district race by noon tomorrow.
We have, we have two outsiders. I'm not sure that I can, I can publicly endorse either one of you.
You can't vote for us anyway. You have to live.
Yeah, that's right. You have to move across the street. I can go stay in Zach's camper.
Literally, across the street is District One where you could vote for one, but not here.
Residence will be up to me then. Unless your name is Charlie White, residency is a state of mind. Yeah, Cade is a, Cade's a voter in the district. He lives out in the Westwood area.
I think we're actually kind of neighbors. I live right around the corner, I think. You live out on 50?
50 North.
Yeah, I live just back on 75. Well, my farm is on 75 West. I live just south of Westwood School on Greensboro Pike.
Okay, yeah, you're close. We recycle out there, Westwood. I'm, I'm all for green.
Yeah.
Except for one thing.
You're all about green.
I'm green too, as long as it's not the.
Green, except for one thing.
I'm, I'm green, except for one.
Except for one thing, I am 100% for renewables. And I won't tell you what it is.
Oh, I think we know here. We'll get into it in a minute. There's going to be plenty of time, plenty of time.
I'm pro farmers.
Are you?
I grew up on a farm. We didn't go that far back. I grew up on a little farm and my dad was an organic farmer. He was just 50 years ahead of his time.
You grinnled.
He would have been rich today, but everybody else made fun of him. They were putting porn chemicals on. He used chicken manure. It was dried chicken manure. They brought it up from Georgia. Three farmers in Montgomery County used it.
He wasn't smart enough to find chickens that lived here?
No, no, I mean, we're talking tons of dried chicken manure in 50 pound bags. So there's not enough chickens in Montgomery County to have, to have done three farms worth. But no, I really believe if he were an organic farmer in 2018, he would make a living on just the 200 acres they had over there. He wouldn't have to have a thousand acres.
So you spent all this time as an administrator and you finished, you finished up your career in Newcastle? Or are you finishing your career? You're in your final year now. You've got like senioritis now.
Yeah, pretty much. I went from tri to three years at Union as their principal. Very small school. I just read that they're going to continue one more year. They're very small up in Randolph County. Well, also Stony Creek Township goes into.
Yeah, we've heard, we've heard Union was potentially going to merge with another school corporation or something was going to happen. I don't know. I don't know where that story's at, if they're going to merge with Blue River. I know they've lost a lot of kids to Muncie South.
Yeah, they, they're very small. It's a nice school, but they, it's hard to keep the offerings and the curriculum there. It's hard to just, it's just hard to operate financially with that few students because it's all contingent upon enrollment. Every school is contingent upon enrollment because that's where the money comes from so much per student. So they have to be struggling. This is a good school. I was there three years and then the last 21 years I've been associate principal at tri. We have three administrators and I'm kind of second in command.
So do you have a list of students that you liked, didn't like, that you can share with us? People that have moved on to big things that you said this kid's never going to be a damn thing in this world.
Like Cade?
Yeah, but now they're, but now they're successful and you're like, well, I called that one wrong.
Lots. We won't mention names, but I'll have to say one of the things keeps me going is success stories. I mean, they come back on occasion. I, I left the, I went to Ace Hardware before coming here for a magnet that I needed for something and some three of our kids were going into the store next to it and. Mr. Gray, how you doing? So it's, we have good students. Yeah, I think we have as good a students as any, anyone. I know that I get a bad rap, teenagers do, but we, we have good students. I just, 85% of our discipline comes from 15% of the students that I see fairly often. So they're the ones that spend most of my time with, 15%, 85% of our students. I'd compare them, put them up against any students, any school in the state.
Yeah, what about Tanner Purdue?
Tanner's been a guest on here.
Not a real familiar, you know, if they're not a familiar name to me, that is really good in my area.
If you stayed off the radar, Tanner, man.
Now, Cade, I don't even know it.
I'm surprised, yeah.
I knew Cade, but it was positive.
That's funny.
All right. So let's, let's talk, let's talk politics a little bit.
Time to get into the, to the hard questions.
Sure, hard hitting questions.
The gadget questions. We've, we've put about 75% on that sheet.
Why did you run over the turkey with your car? Let's start with that.
It was an accident. I liked that Eric as well as anybody. I told you, I put a post up and had Leonard Skinnerd in the background of it, you know, Free Bird.
That's awesome.
It just really moved me.
It's a sad week for our community. I know Barbara Bush died and that's why they lowered the flags to half staff. But I can't believe the mayor didn't call them to go to half staff around here or the county commissioners. I know Kim Cronk's watching right now. Why didn't Kim ask for the, the, the flags to go half staff at county buildings?
I listened to her speak, one of these business seminars that came in. I think at the time it was Market Square, so it was a few years back, 15 years back.
Market Square was an arena in Indianapolis before you were born.
Probably before you were born. They demolished it a long time ago.
I think it came down in 98.
But it was one of those Zig Ziglar type things, business. And she was one of the speakers. I don't remember General Schwarzkopf was and probably what the football player. But she, she put on a good talk back then, so I had to respect her. She was very pro-family. I mean, her family was everything to her. So, you know, it's a sad day. Barbara died.
Yeah, that was, that was a big, a big story that came out last night. Yeah, I, I think most first ladies, that they're all universally loved, but she was, she was very important to a lot of people and, you know, yeah. She was, she was excellent. Obviously, the wife of the president, father of the president, or mother, father of the president. Man, that would be progressive. Mother of another president and a governor as well. Just crazy, crazy.
I said that's happened twice in American history.
Yeah.
Situation of two presidents.
Obviously, she did something right.
She raised them all right. So let's talk about local government a little bit.
Okay, sure.
So what, what motivated you, first of all, just, you know, this is the first time you've run for office in Henry County, at least in my knowledge. I've been paying attention to this for a while.
Yeah, it is. I wanted to retire. I wanted to do something for the community. I wanted to have something to do. Everyone that said they retired, you better have something to do other than just hobbies. But I've got plenty to do around the house, but I wanted to do something to contribute back. I became interested in local politics because of the wind turbines. I saw a map of leases that went across from our house and saw one was going to go up. Honestly, a year and a half ago, I thought they were good. I looked at them driving up to Chicago, saw them over in Randolph County, saw them in Tipton County, Benton County. And I just kind of looked at them as modern marvels. You know, I thought, wow, those are kind of neat. They're green. They're going to save, save the planet and they're going to help with energy and they're really efficient. And I said, well, one's going across the road from me. I better read up on it. So I did a year of reading. And I just came away with a different opinion entirely because of health effects, property values. Not only human health effects, but on Avery, birds, livestock. And those kinds of situations, channel flicker, mostly ear, hearing, inner ear kinds of issues, people not being able to sleep. It actually research on heart muscle and those kind of things. Tinnitus. My wife already has tinnitus. She has a constant ringing of the ears. And about 30% of the population, if they don't have it, will develop that condition if they're within, you know, half mile to a mile of a wind turbine or two. So I have no doubt that would be exacerbated if one goes 1,500, 1,600 feet across the road from us.
So it's a personal, it's a, it's a personal motivation for you where it's going to be in your backyard?
Personal. We saved up our entire lives. See, we grew up on a farm. Love country living both of us. She grew sheep and showed them at 4H. I was 4H. Growing up in rural Fountain County, we lived, actually, our little farm was county line. Part of it was on Fountain County, part of it was in Montgomery County. Last year, my dad was ill and my older brother and me, we put out the whole farm. I was, I had takeoff school. I was 17 and he was in college at Purdue. And he was 26, so we put out the whole farm that year as far as soybeans and corn. Had a pretty good yield, so I think we put in the right planter plates. So we weren't sure between soybean plates and the corn. I said, this looks good. It looks like a little, a little bit of pinkish on it, so I think it's corn. So we, we lucked out and had a yield. So we always wanted to get back on the farm. We had livestock. We had pigs. We had one of the first automatic milking dairy operations in west central Indiana. And the bottom went out of milk and we had to get out that with the beef cattle. And anyway, we always wanted to go back. We lived in married student housing. We lived in Richmond. And we wanted to get back to, and we lived in Newcastle over in the Sunny Side area for about, I don't know, 20 years? For the last 12 years, we, we lived out north of the radio station on 50 North.
Okay.
So it was personal. I mean, it really was. I, I was all, I was neutral or thought they were a good thing until I did a lot of research. Bought books. This is an ecologist from Great Britain and Great Britain has had wind turbines for two or three decades before America. This is a 2017 book that goes into the fact that they wouldn't exist if it weren't for federal tax subsidies and production tax credits that they would probably all go out of business within a month. So they're subsidized by the federal government. So they're subsidized by the federal government. I would think as libertarians, that might be something that would bother you, but.
Yep.
It kind of bothers me. I mean, farms started getting federal subsidies about the time we had to sell because, like I said, dad was an organic farmer. We didn't have enough money to buy more acreage. So we had to end up selling the farm, which is unfortunate. We, we always wanted to get back to a small, uh, out, out in the country. And we finally got there.
You answered two questions that we have, uh, we have a bullet point down here on industrial wind turbines and, uh, the first question was, would you support tax abatements? Cause that would be your role as a county counselor. Obviously not, is what I'm getting from that.
I, I wouldn't because they'll go in even without the abatements. I, I a hundred percent believe that right now with the federal government subsidies and the, uh, production tax credits, they would make enough profit if the, the commissioners, agree to a setback that I'd last heard was between fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred feet. They had figured out they'll make enough profits and be able to put up enough wind turbines to still go ahead without the abatement.
That was the third question on, on industrial wind turbines was, so you do, you do believe that they will still go in even if the abatements are dead?
Yeah, so I really do. If the, if the, uh, setbacks are what I believe that they're going to be, and you see, I just got into this research a year ago. There's been people fighting this for two, two-plus years. And I understand farmers needing the money. I understand the county needing money because I think we're millions of dollars in the red from what I hear. And something's gotta be done about that. Uh, it's not gonna happen overnight. But the, the, uh, you know, since they put the tax caps on, on the property taxes, they, they have given avenues for, you know, the local income tax on the loyats and slits and, and those kind of things. And this last time, I, I just visited the county jail today. And, uh, I wouldn't want my, I'm gonna say this, I wouldn't want my dog staying there. It's, uh, it's deplorable. It's not for, and they've improved it from what I hear. They've gone in and painted it and, but it's not, it's not habitable. I wouldn't, I, it's inhumane. Something's gotta be done. If, if person's against doing something with our Henry County Jail after visiting it and going into these cells. And I was taken into the inner parts of the cells, you know, with mattresses on the floor because it's overcrowded. Uh, there's something wrong with them. If they're not in favor of doing something with our county jail. So you wouldn't want a human being in there. If, you wouldn't want any of your relatives ever to be put in that jail, even if they deserve to be jailed. You wouldn't want them in our Henry County Jail, I don't think.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's a message we've heard from, from every candidate that's come through that, you know, that our jail is an embarrassment and.
It is.
I under, I, I guess the question I have, uh, talk about the wind, the wind topic you're on, um, you know, we, we opened with. If you're, you're a no vote on the abatements, what else can you do from the county council to, to be an opponent to that or an opposition? The county council has one seat on the planning commission. You know, that, that you don't have a lot of influence there. So what motivates you to say, hey, I want to run for county council? That's the, that's the way that I can be a, you know, a, uh, a part of this process. Cause it, it's, you know, that, that seems to be, I, I know we asked you earlier, you're, when we were setting this up, that transparency is your number one issue and we'll talk about that. But this all, this is obviously a very big part of your campaign. So what motivates you to run for county council in, you know, that, how is this, how does this get you to where you want to be?
Well, I, I think that you, you have to know something about finances. You have to, you know, scrutinize and prioritize. You have to look at what's gone on the last five, six years to get us in this position. And figure out a way, working with people that maybe are more knowledgeable or have more experience to, what are the avenues to get us out of this? And like I said, it's not gonna be overnight. If we're, let's say, twenty million dollars in the red, we didn't get there overnight. I think it started probably when Chrysler started going out and you started seeing a downturn and, and monies coming in and you had Modern Fold and Metal Dine and Dana and it just, we were so dependent on manufacturing. We need to get more industry in. We need to get more high-quality, uh, jobs in. I don't know if you were at that, I didn't see at the, uh, EDC meeting, but they brought a person in that was oversight development at a international level in to speak last night at First Baptist. And, uh, he went through what manufacturers basically are looking for and they lured, uh, micronutrients out, out there. And he went through what it took. Uh, you know, it started out with like fifty sites around the country and it went down to ten and then four and then two, one in Kentucky and Newcastle. And, uh, he went through the way they came here and some of it had to do with the, uh, quality job force, uh, transportation. The EDC committee was more impressive to, to them and had how they sold the community. But Ed Tarantino asked a guy afterwards, after broke up and some people went up and talked to this, uh, Mark Williams, who actually is CEO of this very large company in Columbia, South Carolina, about industrial wind turbines because he's passionate about that also. And what's your feeling about that? He said, well, I wouldn't want to live next to one. He probed a little bit more and he said, but, good, bad, way, boy. And he said, I'll be honest with you. They started out when there was a projection that the energy consumption would continue to increase like it had in the sixties, seventies, eighties and nineties. And he said, the last five or six years, it's gone flat. Energy consumption has not gone up. And most of the wind turbines and most of these wind farms, uh, sit idle. There's not the demand for them. And the other thing about the wind, wind turbines, they're intermittent. The wind doesn't always blow and you can't store energy. It's, it's provided and it's used simultaneously. It's not like water or hydroelectric. You can turn on the tap.
It's very difficult to regulate it.
Right.
So that's, uh, we, we can store it, but it is very, very expensive to store it.
Right.
And, uh, this is what I do. This is, that, working in the, uh, the electrical industry is my, is my job.
But if the wind doesn't blow, you have to have the, the, uh, uh, coal and you have to have the gas.
Yeah.
And you have to have the hydroelectrics have to back it up. So it's very inefficient and the net system of electricity being provided down the grid, you have to have a backup. So when people say it's green energy because it's saving net, either fossil fuels, that's, that's a misnomer. Plus it takes, uh, tons of coal, coke to make steel because there's so many tons of iron that goes into the tower. I mean, not the blades, but the tower and the cell and all those kinds of things and the generator that's inside of it, not to mention the concrete that's made. Cause the concrete basis, I mean, it goes like fifteen, twenty feet into the ground and when the decommissions, they, all they have to do is take off the top eight feet. So the rest of that concrete stays in the ground forever. A lot of these companies go bankrupt. So they might have a nice decommissioning, but if they go bankrupt, if you go out in California, you'll see tens of thousands of these things north of LA. And maybe ten percent of them are operating. They're just wind turbine graveyards.
The, uh, the important thing, i- if, you know, i- if a commissioner enters into an agreement where one comes in, I think the important thing is to have strong bonds in place where you've, you've prepaid the decommissioning. You've got a bonding company that's going to carry, carry it and you need to make sure that you're, you're gonna be whole. So that if, if you do have a project that fails, you know, whether it's, the same thing we do with highway projects now, when we build a multi, you know, a hundred million dollar highway project, the typically, there's a, there's a bond in place for that value. The state of Indiana got some, some egg on their face when they tried to build I sixty-nine and they had, they didn't require a full hundred percent bond and the state wound up having to get in their pocket because it didn't work out. But generally, if, if government is doing their job with those, they've got bonds in place that are gonna cover the full decommissioning.
Well, hopefully.
Yeah.
I mean, hopefully that's the case. Uh, I can't say, I've, I've read some of these agreements. I've, I've read some of these actual lease agreements that farmers have signed and they, they, they concern me. I mean, I'm not supposed to get a hold of it, but I got a hold of one. I mean, they're supposed, they're very secretive. These people that sign good neighbor agreements, very secretive. You can't say anything negative. You don't have any control over your property. They, they can put these things anywhere on their property they want as long as it's distance-wise from whatever the commissioners come up with as far as a setback. It could be on the most prime land of your property that you have. It could be where you want to graze the cattle. Um, I know there are.
On the farm, on the leased ground.
Right.
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 The good neighbor, obviously, you have to agree for them to be on there, but they're paying, in theory, they're paying you to be a good neighbor so that you don't complain. So you're gonna get some sort of a.
So you can't say anything.
Right.
I mean, once you sign that thing, it's, it, I believe it's a gag order. You really cannot say anything.
It's voluntary, right? You're, you're, you're in a voluntary transaction at that point.
Yeah, you better have a good lawyer before you sign any of those.
Yeah. The, uh, as a libertarian, or the position I've always taken on them is they're subsidized at every level. You know, the government says you have to have a certain amount of wind in, in, in the grid, or wind or solar or whatever it is.
Up to the states. And Indiana's, it's optional. It's a goal. There's about twenty-five states that it's twenty percent or more. And then in the west coast, it's twenty-nine percent in Ca, in California and it's thirty percent in, uh, in New York.
I think Hawaii is close to thirty percent as well.
They have some of the highest utility or electric rates in the country because of those requirements.
We have a regional grid. So the Indian, you know, the power you generate at the Duke Energy Station over in Catas may not go into your, you know, go into what gets used in Newcastle. It may end up going into Ohio or Michigan or somewhere else. Same thing here, that, you know, the goals, this, 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 uh, this power that could theoretically be generated could end up going to Michigan or some other location.
No doubt.
Um, so that's, you know, it's generate, it, it's subsidized to that level. And then we do this abatement game where they, you know, the county, the county tries to attract somebody that's gonna make a generator, the, the, the transmission. Uh, or, you know, the, the gearbox. Muncie had the Bernaby project that, that failed. Uh, but Delaware County gave some significant discounts and to that. I know there was talk that the, the old, before Crown came in, there was talk of a, of a wind processing facility, wind input facility being put there at that location that never did materialize. Uh, and then these count, the counties obviously do these, these, uh, abatements as well for the actual construction. So they're subsidized at every level. And on that, that's where I'm like, you know, let's not do that. It's a, if, if it doesn't stand economically, then I'm not interested in it.
And it, it can't.
It gets propped up.
Well, even William Buffett said in, in front of Congress, he was trying to sell wind. And of course, anything he's trying to sell, it's, it's gonna be benefit for whatever, Burchford Halfway, whatever his company is.
Yeah, Bertram.
Yeah.
Berkshire Hathaway.
Something like that.
Berkshire Hathaway.
Yeah, but he, he said it, yeah, Berkshire Halfway. And he said in front of Congress that he, uh, he said, wind, wind makes zero sense aside from the, the abatements and the subsidies. He said, no one would get into the wind industry. So he's in the wind industry, uh, wind industry, uh, solely because of what the federal government is doing to, uh, basically pump it up and keep it alive. And I just, I'm, I'm for green energy. Uh, I am not for wind because I don't think it's green energy in any way, shape or form. And the making of what it takes coal to make the, the steel. The fact that, uh, we're in a process that we're not needing the energy. I, I was not saying we're never going to need the energy. But we, uh, the environment is so much cleaner than it was when I was growing up, you know, forty years before you were born.
Cleveland's, the, the river in Cleveland's not burning anymore, right?
No, no. I mean, I, I remember Lake Erie, you know, the, no swimming, no fishing. I remember an article on Life Magazine. That was way before your time too.
Printed magazines. They used to take the internet and put it in a book and then mail it to you.
Way before the internet, saying if we stopped all pollution going into Lake Erie, it'd be a hundred years before we'd, uh, get back to being able to swim in and fish in it. They did a really good job, uh, EPA or the, the, uh, cities or what, the states, Ohio.
It's already been a hundred years?
No, it's, it started, they started swimming within twenty years and there's commercial fishing going on. It, it, nature has a way of cleaning itself up way faster. If, if human beings would get out of the way and quit polluting and putting, you know, stuff in that shouldn't be put in, you know, goes back to Rachel Carson and DDT and all that stuff. We've done some nasty things in the past, but we're so much cleaner than what, even coal plants with the scrubbers. I, I remember just unbelievable, unbelievable black stuff billowing out of all sorts of plants, not just coal. So I, I just remember a time where it was a lot dirtier in this country. And I think the whole industrial revolution was much dirtier growing up with all the factories billowing out stuff. And coal mines. I mean, there was no protection. That's why the unions started on the UAW. There was no protection, very little, uh, safety, very little, uh, very low pavement and those kind of things. I'm off-topic, but it does relate to, you know, green versus.
No, no, you're fine. We go off-topic all the time.
Well, I did notice that in the past.
The, we've, we've talked about the wind issue here, but beyond, beyond the abatement side, it's, it's basically, you're saying it's a soapbox for you as a, as a council candidate or as a councilman.
Yeah.
You can speak on it, it'd be a county official, but I.
It's commissioners.
Yeah.
It's, it's really the commissioners.
So are you running for county commissioner in two years?
I'm not, not, not that I have any plans of it. But let's, uh, one hurt all the time. You're my opponent and Adam's my opponent and Pat French might be my opponent in November depending on how it goes. Let's, let's, or, yeah, we'll see.
Yeah. Eh, you never know. It's, it, it, I, I always, you know, I'm, obviously, I, I think I'm a qualified candidate and I'm running, I'm running for a reason, but everybody has to interview for their job. You know, two, four years ago, when I ran for the seat, uh, I was the only guy, you know, I was the only guy. If I hadn't run, uh, you know, Dick would have been reelected and hadn't, didn't have to do anything. I outspent him fifty dollars to zero and he, you know, he still kicked my ass, but you know, it is what it is.
He told a friend of mine that if, he would quit running if he ever had to spend any money for a campaign. I said, that must be nice.
Yeah.
I'm not in that position.
The campaign finance forms are due, uh, due here on the, on Friday, so.
Yeah, fourteen, I thought they was fourteenth. I thought they were due last Saturday.
I think it's the end of the, uh, the reporting period, but you got till Friday again.
He's ahead of schedule.
Mine's, mine's in.
There you go. How, how'd you do? How much did you raise? How much did you spend? Let's go.
Not, not a whole lot. I probably, uh, you had Butch Baker on here.
Yeah.
A few weeks ago and he said his first run, because he had a lot of competition, first time for sheriff, he put ten thousand dollars in. I'm about one-twenty though. I'm on a shoestring budget, let me tell you.
That's the way it goes. Uh, coming from a libertarian campaign, we ran a governor's race on about twenty-five grand. So I understand how it goes.
That's unheard of.
Yeah, we, uh, you gotta do what you can with what you got. So, uh, transparency in local government was your number one issue. When we said, hey, what's, what's the thing? What's that mean to you and how can, how do you want to improve it as a councilman?
Well, when I first got into this, I really, a ton of people started telling me that they did not know, uh, about wind. The meetings weren't either taped or they're not recorded or they're not videotaped or, and you just really had to dig to find anything out that there's, I'll give the example of wind because that was one of the passion things that got me to put my name in the till. Most people did not know how far along it was until it was pretty far along. And, uh, they, they were not happy about that because they, they did their research before I did my research. I mean, they started researching and, and so this is gonna affect the health and safety and property values and aesthetic view scape and all those kind of things in the county. And we had no idea, cause all I have to do is, uh, one, one publication. I, you know, I don't think they have to do the Courier Times and the Knightstown Banner and the Middletown News. All they have to do.
The law is you need one, one county, one county newspaper, basically.
And usually it's in that fine print and illegal, and unless you're trying to bid on something, your business trying to bid on, or a share sale and you're after a, you know, cheap property or whatever, most people don't read those, those notices. Uh, you might say, well, they could and they should, but they did not know that the wind was this far along until it was pretty darn far along.
That parts, that, that, that parts the frustrating part to me when it comes to folks saying, hey, I had no idea because there, there are, the courier shows up at all these meetings and they run, there are stories. There, I mean, wind was, you know, for, I was, it was probably two thousand and five, two thousand and six that we saw that northeastern Henry County was a targeted area and there were three, there were two or three active projects. The, the project down in, um, in, in the southern part of the county seemed like generally people were excited and Economic Development Corporation and the, uh, Planning Commission was, was fully supportive and things sailed through. And then the, the project in the northern part of the county, it seems like that kind of woke people up four, uh, two and a half years ago.
Yeah.
Uh, and that I, you know, I, I personally, once again, you know, I said, there, there was a meeting probably in Knightstown five years ago when they first started talking about the southern district and I showed up at that meeting and attended it and said, you know, subsidized at every level and I don't support that necessarily. But that, I, I, I learned about that one through the Courier Times and the local media and there were people that were there. The, I, I just, I'm shocked at people that say, well, nobody told me. How, how does?
They have us now.
Yeah, they, of course, they have a lot of liberty, but how do people not pay attention? I, I just don't understand how they're not plugged in enough to at least have an idea of what county government's doing.
I can speak for myself. I didn't, I did not know. I was uneducated. Here I am an educator. I was not educated. I was not, I was neutral until I saw it going across and I did some research. And the problem is the research that is against the, the, the health, the livestock, the birds, the property values. Wind turbines haven't been around forever. Uh, most of this research started coming out in Europe and Australia where they, and maybe California. And more recently, Canada, where they'd been, uh, pretty liberally, uh, installed a couple decades ago. You know, doctors like Nina Pierpoint and Octario, she started having patients come in. She's a pediatrician and an M, MD with these same symptoms, mostly relating to inner ear and sleeplessness and dizziness and, and, uh, grouchy-ness because of lack of sleep and all those things. And she started seeing a pattern and then people started researching and start documenting and, and putting out, you know, articles on this. And a lot of that hadn't come out until the last five years, to be quite honest with you. So I, I think when people started hearing about it and started researching it, then they became more alarmed. And I'm not sure the people that are focused, it seems to me, mostly on the money are taking seriously those bad side effects that I think are scientifically proven and medically proven now. I, I think because these wind companies go into, uh, communities that are cash strapped. Henry County with these manufacturers leaving are needing money. I mean, we, you know, it's awfully appealing. We're talking millions of dollars being pumped into this community. I just hope and pray we can find a different way to get monies into this than that. There has to be a way that doesn't have all the, the negative side effects on, on people and animals and, and landscape and all those kinds of things that we can generate money in a more positive way. That's not supported by the federal government.
So what are two things that we can do for transparency in the local government?
Well, uh, recording, you know, like you did at the, the park meeting the other night, I think it doesn't cost that much to, to put in some equipment that you're recording. I mean, we have that in our board meetings, in Newcastle schools. It goes over the internet and, uh, it, it doesn't take tens or twenties, about $30,000, uh, to do those kinds of things and record them and play them back, have them available on the internet.
Yeah. With, without our, I mean, just the two of us, without our microphone, we have about $1,200 wrapped up in the equipment that we take there.
Yeah, you have good equipment. I think you are bass boosted. I think you've put up treble on mine. I would like to be making trainer here and have a little bit more bass, you know?
He's all about that bass.
I'm all about that bass. You guys, you guys.
Well, I think you have the equalizer all, all bass over there because you.
It's all, it's all neutral. It's just, it's pure talent. I mean, we pay for the microphones. We set them the way we want them.
You make me sound like Tiny Tim.
Go all Ronald Reagan. Yeah. Wait till we go to post-production. Ken and Gray, six inches tall, everybody.
Mickey Mouse.
He's got tiny hands. Trump said he had tiny hands. And he ran over Eric at the Buick. All right. Meeting times. Is the three o'clock once a month the right thing to do? Where should that be?
I, I have to take off work to go to those. I think most people.
Well, you're going to be retired. You're not going to have that problem anymore.
I'm sure the people have that problem.
I get off work at three, at three o'clock. So.
I, I think, I think as far as time, the commissioner meetings, you know, six, six 30 makes more sense. People get home, have a chance to get a bite to eat and go there. I, I don't, I do not like 3:30 for the council meetings.
So even if it's a different day, you'd say six o'clock, six 30 and then make the commissioner come back at the same time.
Yeah. So you would, uh, you'd be right on board with it. Our friend Clay Morgan, every year as he puts that forward, a meeting change.
Yeah, maybe he does. I haven't been following like the, that until I got into, I've been to several meetings since, but yeah, I would be for moving it to at least five, five 30, six. Yeah, I, I think it's silly to have it at 3:30. More people, it'd be more transparent. More people could attend.
After normal business hours at least. So people have time to get home from work and take care of what they need to take care of. I think six would make sense, the most sense at least.
I, I think that's one avenue.
So you said that your third highest, that you're, we asked you what your top, what your top three priorities were. You said transparency and government, inter, uh, industrial wind turbines. And number three was a prioritization with limited funding. So the, the, the things in our county, we, I mean, obviously we don't have a lot of money coming in our county. We've been talking about that. But, uh, what areas of the county, what areas are we spending where you would like to see less or maybe what areas need more? What, what are your, what are your thoughts whenever you say that?
I, I've been studying that a little bit. I, that's one of those things. I think once you're in and you're seeing how things operate and you're, um, get your feet wet in the system, you'll have a little bit better feel than what I see are numbers on paper, but I don't have all the context to those numbers on paper. Even though I've talked to several people and some commissioners, I'm, I'm not, I'm a quick study, but I'm not there yet because I've only put my name in about two and a half months ago. I think roads, everyone thinks we could do better with roads. Uh, I think the gas tax increase should help us out. I think somebody said we'd be getting a million something more because of just the increase in the gas tax that the legislature passed last year, 2017. That'll help. Uh, this last session, 2018, uh, there's a house bill I was reading that's 1263 that'll help, uh, local, uh, counties support, uh, jails. Replacement of jails, improvement of jails, uh, tearing down jails. And it allows counties to impose a point zero one percent to a point two percent. Which would bring in and hit with a maximum of 20 years. And I think that definitely should be looked at because, uh, if anyone would not be in favor of maybe a point one percent. Right now, we tax at the middle. I, I looked that up. We're 45 out of 92 counties. We're smack in the middle. We don't overtax. We don't undertax. Now people would disagree with that. That we, we overtax. Everyone would disagree with that. We, you know, our taxes are too high. I understand that.
The rent is too damn high, man.
Well, you know, speaking of, of rent, you know, I talked to, um, Butch Baker last night at the, no, it was Rick McCorkle. I've spoken to both of them actually.
All the sheriffs.
Yeah, I've spoken to all of them. I, I haven't talked to Kim lately, but you said he's listening, so he'll.
He was watching at one point. I don't know if he's still watching. People come and go, but we can see him pop in for a second.
He got tired of my wind turbines spiel, I'm sure. My soapbox. But anyway.
That's okay. He can face you for two, in two years when you're running for county commissioner.
Yeah, well, let's, let's get past May 8th first. At any rate, Rick McCorkle said, one of the things that kind of hit home to me, he said that, uh, they pay 24,000 a year rent for that Ameriana building for their offices and the sheriff's department.
Well, that's a brand new lease.
Yeah. Well, at any rate, if we were to tap the monies that are now available through that House Bill 1263, which after the visit to the jail today, I think is imperative. It has to be a priority. And I, you know, I, even though they allow like a point two percent tax for jails, I would say be looking at a point one. So it's not an overburden on, on the taxpayers.
I looked at that from the House Bill 1263 you're writing is, it does deal accounting jails. It passed through the House and the Senate both, um, and it does allow counties to adopt a point one or point two percent tax for, to go directly to the rehabilitation or building a new correctional facility.
The state legislature has a real, real good knack for loading the gun, putting it in the hands of the county council and then letting them pull the trigger.
Yeah. It takes the heat off of, off the state level. But ever since they put the, you know, the tax cap in the constitution, um, of course that affects the, the tax rate, but it doesn't affect the valuation. Ours went up 10%. I mean, we got a second mortgage. We refinanced and they appraised our house for a lot more what it was probably worth.
Well, you made the mistake of giving the county your appraisal. That's, that's confidential information. I live in a three room shack down in White Estates that doesn't even have, uh, have, have good sewers. I was giving, uh, the council, the city councilman, uh, oh man, we haven't mentioned Darren Jokic yet today, so we'll mention him now. But we, uh, uh,
I noticed he comes up on every, every show.
Yeah, we have to. I saw him today at the barber shop.
He was at the EDC last night too.
He gets around, man. Anyway, our token socialist, but, uh, I was giving hell to, uh, city councilman Aaron Dickens this morning because I got my sewer bill and I used two units of water, the tiniest I've ever used. Still a $50 sewer bill and they're going to raise it next year in January and I'm going to have the special White Estates surcharge. So I'm going to have like a hundred and fifty dollar sewer bill.
Two bucks, man.
Just don't get an annex out there.
Uh, because we like low taxes, man. If, uh, if we get, if we, the five houses away. No, if I get five houses away, the taxes are about two and a half times what they are living in the county.
I bet they're not mine.
I live in rural, uh, I live in, in Henry Township, not in the city thankfully, but, uh,
Yeah.
Yeah. Who knows?
Who knows what else you're going to live next to out there?
I, I mean, uh, that's another thing, man.
Yeah, you're going to ask me about the 143 acres, aren't you?
Light industrial over, over there in, in Henry Township. Should we, how do we stop this progress, Ken?
I like, I like, uh, Keith Pritchett. I like him a lot. He's, uh, he's an entrepreneur. And he's, he's doing, I saw him out there this past Sunday, Saturday, Sunday.
And nobody knows. It's okay. Either way.
It's Saturday.
You sure?
Yeah, I came back from Dayton. I came back from Dayton.
Put your hand on the Bible and tell me what day it was.
I won't tell you what my platform is, but I swear that, uh, you know, Saturday, I came back from Dayton and the, and the Air Force Museum, which is wonderful.
You couldn't visit the Air Force Museum that's in Indiana. You had to go to Ohio.
No, the, the one, well, I had to go to the Dayton Airport and pick up a camera that I left there. That's another story. You have to read my, you have to read this and.
You have to go to the Facebook page. Ken and Gray for H C Council.
The camera I left in Atlanta airport and somehow the Delta miraculously found it. And I went back to Dayton Airport to pick it up and we went to the Air Force Museum. But somewhere along the line, we got back and I, somebody helped me put up a sign down on 103 South. And I came back and Keith was out there dredging the ditch deeper so that all the complaints, uh, that apparently, I don't know if you were at that, uh, commissioner's meeting, that the watershed on that property, half of it goes down to, um,
Some go to the.
Blue River.
Yeah, some goes to Fall Creek. It's like the, uh, the, the dividing line of the two hemispheres.
Yeah, half of that property.
Columbus and some goes to Shelbyville.
Through White Estates and then it ends up over in the Blue River and half of it goes east.
And that's the one that pollute from my neighborhood.
Yeah, it's absolutely right. And probably wouldn't if you got annexed. But at any rate.
No, no, the mayor's going to raise my taxes without even me living in the city.
You might as well just bite the bullet and get annexed.
I don't even have a city councilman to complain to.
That sounds like a true libertarian. But anyway, he was out there.
Oh, I'm true.
Yes, I, I.
Very real.
I, I know. I've heard you. But at, but at any rate, I.
Taxation is theft, sir.
Yeah, it's without representation is treason. I've heard all that. And we, listen, yeah, Patrick Henry, that came up at the, yeah, let's, let's put something out there, Patrick Henry out, out the park.
Yeah.
I mean, it's what the county's named after. Give me liberty or give me death. So anyway, Keith was out there dredging deeper. Some of the, uh, ditches going in what they said was not taking the rain when we had the four or five inches of rain. So I, I think he's a good steward. I think he means well. We do need property to expand. Uh, we need something to replace, uh, we're not going to ever get another Chrysler. I don't think. We're not going to get the Honda plant at Greensburg. But, uh, I did hear that, uh, two things that are positive in the area. I heard that we're getting a multi movie cinemaplex out there by the Y.
You're not, you're not in favor of saving the castle? How dare you?
Uh, castle, if they compete, I'm all for them saving the castle. That'd be great. I think the odds are maybe not great, but I, they'd have to do some remodeling to compete against Stereo and the stadium seating and all that. It's, it's ran its course. I remember when they had five movie theaters and I, I wasn't around when they had five movie theaters. But I saw a picture where they had five, you see it in the castle. You see that picture over there by the men's restroom.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about now.
Five theaters on that map back in the forties or fifties, five movie theaters in this town. So at any rate, the other good news is that Crown is going to make their worldwide headquarters or their national headquarters in Newcastle.
Oh, that's awesome. I haven't heard that.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, that was one of the things at the EDC. They, I know they interviewed our principal, uh, the executives when they, they're interviewing for schools. They want to know which schools, in case they move here, they had cheese, honcho. They were interviewing multiple schools around the area for the kids.
I really don't think this community is far from having some actual housing development come in, from having some stick built, nice developments.
I hope so.
I think the time is, I don't think we're far. I think we're probably one more.
Exit.
Strong, yeah, no, one more strong, uh, industrial, you know, to create the demand. The house, the house values have been going up significantly and nicer homes are not staying on the market.
I know my Sess valuation is.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
You're going to get to decide, if you're on the councilman, you get to decide how much of a raping we all have to take on the, on the, on the property taxes. And there's, there's some real decisions to be made.
Yeah. Well, I, I am a fiscal conservative, but I, I also see there's, there's needs, not just the jail, but there's.
Tell me, tell me which of the taxes you would lower than as a fiscal conservative, sir?
Well, like I said, there's, we're 1.5 total taxation and it's right smack in the middle, uh, of counties in the state. I, I don't know. One of, one of the things that we're paying for is, uh, what's it called? Tax reduction? There's another name for it. Tax.
Yeah, your property taxes. We, we, some pass out through the economic development group. They, they, they redistribute some money magically and then you get some relief on your property taxes.
Yeah.
I don't know the name of it.
It's a tax, it's tax relief of some kind. It's not a high percentage though. And I'm sure the powers that be at the time thought this was a, a good way. I'm not saying it's good or bad. That's one of those things. I think when you get into government and you have a chance to really study, as I said, the context, I, I'm seeing lots of numbers and I don't know what went into those numbers quite yet, but I, I, over time, I think within six months, I'd have a pretty good grasp of that, but I honestly don't right now to be able to tell you that.
I can tell you from my time serving on the park board, uh, the most frustrating experience of my life, by the way, serving on the Henry County Memorial Park.
I could tell that the other night.
It was, uh, it, it's, it's not easy. Very, very frustrating, but 75% of your budget is, is headcount.
Yeah.
And a lot of it's legacy headcount. And the county struggles with that and we've made, you know, we've made commitments to people that we need to find a way to, to deal with them long-term. You know, we, we've made commitments, but we've got, we've got to find a way to get our costs in the current year, uh, from the business side.
Well, you said we have the same budget at the park that we did back in the nineties.
In the nineties, yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
And, and, but your.
Who does that?
Yeah.
But we don't have the income because we don't have the Chrysler. We don't have the modern fold. We don't have all those kinds of things, even metal dime.
And the Umba report says that our, our, our park budget is going to drop because of the way that the, you know, the park budget is designed by the state. The health departments in the park, parks departments are going to take a hit. And in the future, you know, the future of that park is very much in doubt is if it's a county park and how, how do you actually pay for, you know, it, it, to have any employees at all? How do you pay for the maintenance out there? And then, you know, you've got a 300 acre park with a $400,000 budget and a, you know, a superintendent that's out there and a, a couple of people. And you've got a lot of mowing to do. You've got a lot of, a lot of utilities.
People do it free, gratis. Most people won't.
Takes some very special people to make that happen.
Yeah, it would take very special people to make that happen. My understanding from the other night is that came really close to being a state park back in the day.
Uh, there are some people, I, I don't know how, if there was actually ever an offer on the table, but it was, you know, in the forties, I think it was, uh, it was definitely a gem of the state. And some people talked about wanting it to be a state park.
And I'm not, I'm just not sure now it's considered a gem. And it's probably because the, the budget's stagnated in the last 25 years. I mean, if you're going to have it a gem, you're going to have to put some monies into it.
Some parks are a gem. The Saddle Club is phenomenal. It's a, it's a absolutely top notch facility, uh, but that's not controlled by the memorial park.
No, no.
And I think there's going to be some.
Butch and his life, pretty much kind of.
Well, Rebecca Baker is the, uh, the president of the Saddle Club. So, but Nancy Dietz was involved with it. Casey Gideon was involved with it. Uh, the late, uh, uh, John Jordan was out there for a long time. It's, there have been a number of different people that have, uh, that have led that in, in their groups, but it's a 501(c)(3) independent organization.
We bought our land from Dietz. He's a nice guy. The, the plumbing, plumbing Dietz.
Electric, yeah.
Electric, yeah. Electric Dietz Saddle, west of 38, west of, uh, whatever.
So the, the jail, we, we, we'll circle back to that real quick and then we're probably running out of time or running up on the.
Oh my.
I know. It goes quick, doesn't it?
It does go very, Ed told me it went quick.
With no commercial breaks, Dakota.
We gotta start, we gotta start selling.
We have to start doing.
Well, your first 15 minutes of selling those.
Shameless self-promotion.
Yeah, I see that.
Look at all the signs, the green, the green gray. So the, the county's going to have a, a proposal come back from the, uh, a study. We've paid for another, yet another study.
I, I, I.
On, on the jail and they're going to tell us we need a new jail.
Yeah.
So what do we do to buy a new jail? You, the, the, I guess we raise the income taxes?
Well, that's going to have to be part of it. I mean, you have to prioritize, but that is a sad, sad black mark on the community. And it is uninhabitable. The gentleman showed me around, uh, Bachover, very nice gentleman, um, well-respected. I mean, even the inmates were, you could tell he developed rapport with some of the inmates. They'd put a lot of improvements. He said he should have seen this two years ago. But even with those improvements that he alluded to, uh, it's got to be a priority. Whatever it takes, it has to be a priority. I know that's sued over, but he said every county's been sued over, but, uh, Lawrenceburg's built a new one. Like nine million or something like that. They added on to the other. They own the property across the street. The mayor had said they would close that one street, whatever it is, 12th Street, that one block and be able to maybe add on, add a new two-story. I think they can do that within the context of maybe half of that local provision. And then at 1263, we don't have to go for the full point two percent.
Well, not yet, but once you create that tax in place, then the, the guy after you will be like, oh, well, you need more. We gotta go, we gotta double it now.
But when I'm commissioner, that won't happen.
Yeah, well, but you won't be in charge of the tax rates then. It'll be the next schlub that comes along and he raises the taxes.
That could be you.
Well, you never, well, no, I won't be the guy raising the taxes. In 1988, we put in this stupid food, this food and beverage tax that paid, that paid for, that paid for the, the Hall of Fame. And then about five years ago, they realized we're still collecting the money, but we paid for the damn thing. So we got a bunch of money. So we never got rid of the tax. We spent the money and we bought it. We built Ivy Tech. And then we keep spending the money. And now every time we award this money, we cause these doughboy fights out of Memorial Park where we've got a little bit of money and everybody gets pissed about how we're going to spend it.
Yep. Yeah. It's politics.
So on the jail, when they walked you through, did they give you any numbers as far as the overcrowding, what the majority?
Yeah, it's, it's right now about twice what it was built for.
Yeah.
It was one of the last linear. He said it was out of date when it was built in the late seventies, near 80. One of the very last linear. They, they do pods now.
Yeah.
And it wa- it was out of date before they ever opened it.
Yeah.
I wasn't here at the time, I don't know what the history that went into it, but it, it's, it's overcrowded. And they moved, uh, there's a transitional one across, that, uh, building across the street from it, that those that are trying to transition back into regular, um, back into the neighborhoods and back on the streets.
Yep.
It's a little bit better conditions, so they've split it up about eighty and ninety or something like that, but it was built for seventy-eight.
We had a question earlier from Mr. Tom Norris, uh, he was asking about drug abuse, how much do you think local?
Oh, I, well, he, I asked that question, in fact, glad you brought it up, I asked that question, I said, what percentage of those that are incarcerated has something to do with, with drugs and, and one person told me ninety percent. So it's, and it's not just here, I mean, I, we see it all carry over into the schools, I mean, it's, it's a microcosm of the community. You see it in the jails, people get addicted, so mental health and drug addiction, I, you know, at the tops, I, it's not my field, but it's something that we, somehow the community has to invest in, I know the whole community, uh, initiative has been involved in that, I know there's talk at the county level, there's talk at the city level. It's just a hard one to wrap your head around.
Yeah.
But it has to be a priority. I mean, if ninety percent of our jail incarceration rate relates somehow, uh, I love this, by the way. Uh, I saw the lemons in your glass, I was so, so apropos.
Well, you sound like, sound like Tanner Purdue, those are limes.
Oh, they're lime, I don't know, I don't put them in, I don't ask for them in restaurants in my tea either, I said, now hold those, 'cause I said they reuse them from glass to glass, I said.
No citrus.
I think it was on Sixty Minutes or something like, you know, Legion Airlines.
Yeah, but one more question here, and this is from Kirsten Kronk, and she's one of our Patreon subscribers that.
She goes straight to the front of the line.
Yep.
Patreon buys your way, buys influence.
That's how it works, you can buy your way in, that's true politics.
She, uh, she wants to know the, the thought process behind your, behind your, the Facebook polls that you do. Uh, and if those are gonna have any influence on your.
Totally, totally my warped mind.
By the way, her, the full disclosure, her mother-in-law is also one of our opponents, she's, she's Pat's, uh, Pat's daughter-in-law.
Oh, really? Oh, that's neat. Well,
It's a small town, man.
Right, they're the kinds of things that I would want to know, or my family would want to know, or when I do these meet and greets, people ask me about. One was like a ride to the polls, you know, would you need a ride to the pole? And it's not been, I mean, it's not totally unscientific.
Will you pick me up at my house in November and take me for a ride?
No, probably not. Only if you vote for me.
Oh, yeah, I'll vote for you.
Yeah, yeah.
You guys can train, you can train votes.
That's right.
Yeah.
It's like Donna Moss on the Westwood. I actually voted for the other guy.
Yep, well, cross each other off at the ballot, voting for each other. Uh, no, it's just off the top of my head, things that I think, it came up at a, a campaign meeting that we had, I had with Ed the other night, that, uh, I think it'd be nice if we offered people a ride to the polls, we can't promise them, but we would try. As of last night, I haven't looked at it today, as of last night, I think there were like one or two people that said, yes, give me a number to call. And I think that'd be kind of a nice service.
That's easy and durable.
Are those, are the, the questions that you ask at your polls, are those gonna help influence you if you do make it to the council?
Uh, they're not scientific, they just are, they're kind of a pulse, they're kind of a litmus test.
Right.
Not a, not a whole lot, but, you know, I don't discount them, I wouldn't put them on there if I wasn't interested. You ever watch the movie, uh, Winston Churchill, I watched that on my eleven hour flight back from Rome two weeks ago, very good, you know?
I don't think so, I don't think I've seen it.
Watch that, the audience should watch that, when he got out of his, uh, chauffeur lim, uh, limousine and they couldn't find him for about six hours and everybody, the whole country was worried, this is, this is about to be bombed by, by Hitler. He's about to go on the air that night saying that he was going to go in the negotiations with Hitler. Chamberlain and everybody else on the, in the parliament and the king was saying, we can't win this, you need to basically negotiate with, with Adolf Hitler. He went off and went into the subway and, and started talking to the actual people, he only talked to maybe thirty or forty. He went back that night and rewrote his speech, uh, based on what those people in the subway said, which was, should we negotiate with Adolf Hitler? And they started singing, never. And it echoed down the whole subway, never, never, and he changed his speech to never and got the whole parliament behind him and the whole, uh, British people behind him. And, uh, it probably was a change in how the war might have turned out, 'cause Chamberlain was always for negotiating. And, uh, there was no negotiating with Adolf Hitler.
We definitely have different styles in, in our county government, we have people that, you know, uh, Kim's style is he will talk and listen and listen and listen and listen to the point where it annoys everybody in the county, 'cause you don't know where Kim stands on something, and then you have other people that say, this is, this is what I am and this is what I believe and, you know, this, uh, they're not really gonna change. How do you see yourself if you're on the county council? Do you have certain positions where that, you know, this is what you can expect from me and this is what it is, or are you gonna be listening, listening and, and, and kinda making a decision at the last minute?
No, I think you go on my Facebook page, I will tell you what I think on these different topics and I've had people recommend to me who's in politics, don't take a stand on the doughboy, don't take a stand on whatever, don't take a stand, and if I talk to people and I myself can, um, rationally believe this is possible or is, it's, it's doable, I'll take a stand. I, I want people to know where you stand. I know of other candidates that will not take a stand on the turbines, turbines, and I think they should. I think they should take a stand on the jail, I think they should take a stand on the doughboy.
Yeah, they're all, they're all important issues in our, in our county.
Now, the doughboy is more of an emotional issue for a lot of veterans. And that's what swayed me to just take a stand on it, but I think, like I said earlier, ninety percent of everything else they're planning out there and all the work they've done, I'm a hundred percent for everything that they're planning out there. I just have respect for the veterans and the war mothers and those have spoken up against it, that they can come up with something else and maybe a compromise because there's too much emotion behind that one topic.
Anything else for, uh, for him on the, uh, platform side, guys? That, uh, that we've skipped out on or, or we, we satisfactorily asked all of our questions so we can make an informed decision in May?
I'm good.
All right, well, if that's the case, then we're probably at final thoughts, so this is the time for your shameless plug, sir. How, how do people give you more money? How do people volunteer for your campaign? How do they put out signs? How do they help your camp, who is your campaign manager? How do they, how do they help those guys?
I'm my campaign manager, me and my wife, we are a shoestring budget, I said about one-twentieth of what Butch Baker said, he spent the first year in. Gary Rogers is, uh, Dickerson Accounting on South Seventeenth, Indiana and South Seventeenth is my, uh, treasure. As, as some other candidates that he's doing that for, good, good guy, he and his wife. Um, the other movie I would suggest is, uh, probably Erin Brockovich, look at that scene where she gets up and talks to the opposing uh, lawyers from the company that polluted the, uh, the town of Henley, uh, that's where I'm at, I'll do wind turbines.
All right.
Yeah, YouTube it, it's on there.
Erin Brockovich is?
Yeah.
Man.
Yeah.
Low standards now, you don't have to, you don't have to, you don't have to pay to buy it anymore.
Yeah, 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 Roberts, Julie Roberts.
Yes, that's right.
It's a good scene, it's PG thirteen, the language, but it's kinda where I stand on it.
Well, I mean, if you're passionate about something, you can go rate it, we're okay. We call ourselves PG eighteen around here, so. All right, so follow, uh, follow at Kenan Gray, Kenan Gray on, uh, on the Twitter.
Yep.
Uh, Facebook page and, uh, you can mail checks in if, uh, if you're, if you're still raising money.
I am.
No matter what, you gotta be raising money, but you gotta be raising money if you're a candidate.
I'd like to have money for the, uh, maybe the newspapers that last week, 'cause I'm pretty much depleted right now.
You've got signs all over the place.
Well, I've got signs, that's the last one.
Yep, let's stay in the permanent collection, you're not getting that back, it's a term of your, of your time on here.
I've taken some up that's, you know, got bird poop on it and blown, blown over from the winds. I, yeah, I shouldn't promote the wind around here, there is a lot of wind.
Well, those, those, those.
Mostly in politics. Never mind.
Well, very good, thank you for hanging out with us, man. It's fun finally getting to meet you.
Yep, likewise.
And, uh, this, I'm sure that you'll have, uh, the opportunity to share this with people and, uh, a lot, we've definitely learned a lot about you. And, uh, we're excited, uh, excited you made the time to hang out with us.
It's my pleasure.
Yes, sir.
It's fun.
Well, good, we tried to make it fun, it's not, it's, you know, I, so far, I don't think anybody's left us and go, I'm never going back there.
Everybody told me that, just next time, more bass.
Yeah, eh, you know, wait, wait till we get the post. Mr. Cade Koger.
How we doing?
What we know?
Um, I was kinda going through the comments there and seemed like every time I'm on some of these podcasts, especially the people that are opposed to the issue, it gets brought up that, um, I'm more on the pro-win side and so people kind of expect blood when it comes to this.
Well, your, your baby got the, the blood last week out of you.
Yeah, but before the show, I know you said you didn't wanna fight, so we'll, we, we won't fight any and I don't, I don't have to sit here and pretend that you're a bad guy 'cause you're against it, because I completely understand the arguments that are, that are against it. And, uh, I do have empathy for people that feel that it's an issue. But I don't have to pretend that you're a bad guy and say bad things about you when I know that you're a great guy, you know, I had you
Try to be.
in high school as, as my vice principal too and, you know, I've known you for a little while, so I know, I know, I know how that is and I just feel like when it comes to this, and I've said this before as a county, you know, I'd like to see everybody get better at these disagreements, even with the doughboy and everything else. Um, it, people really need to sit down and talk and they need to have these conversations and I'm glad that we're doing this podcast now so that candidates that are interviewing for these jobs can come on and, you know, make their claim and state their case and everybody can be more informed when they go voting for people and I think that's only gonna lead to better leadership within our local government, agreed? So.
Yep. All right, Mr. Davis.
Katie, he kinda stole my final thoughts, sir, a little bit, 'cause man, we had some seriously nasty things going on in the comment section of our Memorial Park Board livestream. And it, it sucks, I hate that, because I, I hate that people.
Well, if you had a better microphone.
They weren't, they weren't particularly nasty towards us, but it was, it was, you know, you, you, we've gotten to the point where, where we're so ready to hate each other over these things and it's horrible and I hate seeing it. And, uh, so that, that was
Yeah, so many things.
Pretty much just hitting the same thing that you were, man, it, I hate seeing that stuff.
It just, things just get so polarized and we live in a, in a time now where technology makes it easy for anyone to get on the internet um, and say their opinion and it's still kind of a new thing and I think people are still learning how to communicate.
Yep.
Especially when it comes to all these different opinions and, um, I definitely think the more that we can communicate without typing in all capital letters and screaming at each other and throwing things around, I think definitely we can find that middle ground and we can
Yeah.
move forward on issues that we do need to come through and I know earlier, uh, Kenan, you said you were pro-farmer and I'm, I'm happy to hear that.
Oh, I'm very much, I have the greatest respect, I know, you know, your livelihood depends on if it rains or if it's a drought or, and all that kinda stuff, it's, uh,
Kate's not a real farmer, but we, we are pro-farmers.
Well, I, I remembered, well, I, I'd like to go, in fact, when I retire, I've got a farmer out at our church that I'm gonna be working for. I, I wanna get back on the tractor, 'cause I have some of the best times of my life.
Mm-hmm. And that's just how I've always, that's just how I grew up, that's what I'm, you know, what I'm used to and I never wanna get away from that and hopefully my kids get older, they can farm as well, so I'm, I'm glad to hear that and, um, I know you're against the wind, um, issue in the county and I, like I said, I understand that.
No, I'm not against farmers, I respect farmers.
Uh, and, but it, it just comes down to a lot of people attacking farmers, you know, especially lease signers and I understand, I understand the the disagreement there. I would just like to see everybody be a little more, you know, pro-farmer as far as that goes.
Well, very good, follow you, uh, at the Arm Farmer on, on all the platforms.
At the Arm Farmer and Cade Koger, just on Facebook.
There we go.
All right, my, my second piece of final thoughts, of course, is to plug the Patreon account, they're redbubble.com, they have a great merchandise. Um, we got a, we got a lot of good stuff coming your way next week, we're technically, if you're a Patreon subscriber, you have four episodes coming to you next week. If you're just a regular fan, then you have three episodes next week.
Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday.
That's right, it's a, it's gonna be a big one, this is the ultimate test of whether or not we like doing this.
We're gonna have fun, it's like a hostage situation, I've got Dakota right where I want him.
Uh-huh.
Uh, yeah, so, uh, final shameless self-promotion from my side, uh, Dakota and I are, we have our first big real speaking gig. Uh, the Libertarian State Convention, we were asked by, uh, Tim McGuire, the chairman to, uh, to speak at their state convention in Indianapolis, so on Saturday morning, uh, May fifth, if you, uh, if you have the, uh, the paid package, you're gonna see us as speakers, uh, our Dakota and myself, we're gonna talk about our relationships and what the Boss Hogg Liberty Podcast has done and how we've gotten plugged in with, uh, with county government, county officials and, uh,
How we get people like Kenan to come on here.
How we can have civil conversations and, and actually talk to people that, uh, that are serving and, and have some influence. Uh, so we're gonna have to give that talk with Danny Lundey, uh, Danny is, uh, uh, a candidate for a township board down in Morgan County. Uh, and he's been attending, uh, a, a number of public meetings down in his area, so looking forward to that, it's gonna be, uh, gonna be a good time. Uh, you don't have to be a libertarian to attend the convention if you wanna learn, uh, learn a little something. Uh, gonna have some really nice food, it's at the Marriott Hotel downtown Indy, uh, right at the finish line of the mini marathon, it's gonna be packed, gonna be a big time.
It's gonna be intense.
So I'm looking forward to, uh, looking forward to that one, uh, really appreciative to, uh, all of our co-hosts and guests that have been here. Uh, I can't believe we've made it fifty-three episodes in, I really can't believe that a turkey has more likes than the Boss Hogg Liberty on Facebook, but that's the world we live in today.
I can.
It's all right, we are gaining fast on it, we are gaining fast.
I like the show.
Uh, we're, uh, we're glad to be here and, uh, it's, uh, it's definitely a niche that, uh, that, uh, we've, that, that, that the county has responded well to and we're, we're excited to be here.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
I like what you, someone said, maybe Cade and maybe Dakota, I like the disagreeing without being disagreeable, I, I, I'm a fan of that.
Yep.
I think that's a good point.
Well, very good, the, uh, after we get through this candidate series, you know, next week, we've got three more candidates and then we're gonna do a live show, we'll announce that now, right now, we're, our plan is to do a live show election
That's a big one.
on primary night, so we're gonna send, uh, we're gonna send Chase Payton, you guys won't know Chase very well, he's, he's a big celebrity, he's on the show, but we're gonna send Chase to the Republican head, yeah, call him Dakota. We're gonna send Chase to the primo and give him a cell phone and, uh, we're gonna try to talk to you and anybody else, uh, at election night.
I think it'll be a primo, I think the GOP candidates are supposed to be primos.
So as, as, as election results come in, we're gonna try to hit people up and, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna get results on the show, we're gonna do a live show, we'll do call-ins with candidates. Uh, and we'll announce the, uh, the results in the senate race, the district six race and anything else that, uh, that's interesting in the news, so we're gonna host live, we're gonna be like, do you remember Tim Russert? Do you even know Tim Russert at this point?
Nope, no idea.
I'm so, this is sad, isn't it?
Yeah, NBC.
Yeah.
Died a few years ago.